Two thousand fifteen zoning board of appeals meeting, if we have a roll call please.
Mr. Hebert?
Present.
Mr. Loizal?
Present.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Crockett? Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Okay, just to start right off, welcome James, James Hebert, it's a new member, glad to have you. Background here, electrical engineer you said?
Yes.
So we've got quite a few engineers, good. Great. Good, may I touch me at? You'll still be a voting member. You don't get off the hook. Mr. Stan Hope resigned today, was today wasn't it?
Yes.
Just schedule wise, work wise, just into the schedule. We appreciate and understand that very well because all of us, it's difficult for anybody to do this. Excuse me. So, we are looking for another person if anybody's interested. The next thing is a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I do have a motion on the minutes of May thirteen, two thousand fifteen.
A move to approve as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motions under the minutes? See none, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we're gonna jump right in, we have one appeal. This is an interesting appeal, a...
Mr. Murren? Is our new member going to be a voting member tonight?
He already did it.
Okay.
He's a voting member tonight. So, um, this is a different appeal than we're used to, so I want to just kinda give everybody an idea of what's gonna happen. And thank you very much for putting that together for me so I can actually know like I know what I'm doing. This is an approval for a special exception, but it is based under the planned development code, section seven E. And this is less than five, this is less than ten acres, and it allows them to be able to come with both items at the same time.
Correct. It's a development of over five acres which requires the master plan.
But, that they can do it at the same time?
They can do it at the same time in front of planning board, yes.
Okay. So, and just, it's basically designed to look at the overall property and trying to make sure that the use is being set up in a, in a way that is best presented for the property. So it's, it's pretty nineteen, I mean, two thousand seven, I've never seen it used, so I'm excited about walking through it, but I'm sure it has been. And I, from the rules, I understand the procedures, you're already saying that this is a complete package, so, because it wouldn't be here for once.
It's, it's a proposal in front of the, the planning board. Our job tonight is basically to look at the fact that outside storage is a component of their business plan. And on the master plan, they have shown out, outdoor storage as, as a component of the site plan. Outside storage is only permitted by special exception in that district. And so the zoning board's role in this whole process is to review the appropriateness of outside storage as a special exception use. It can be permitted only by special exception. So we're, we're reviewing the, the issue of the outside storage component.
That's the only piece of the puzzle.
That's the only piece of the puzzle that is our job to review.
And outside storage with the trucks, uh...
Outside storage can be...
Are the sheds classified as outside storage?
No, no, I mean, anything that's under a roof is, you know, roof and walls is, is okay. But outside storage for them, for example, in this, this proposal that you'll see and, and we will get to in a moment, is, is the materials that the landscaping business will use to provide its service to, to its customers. And, um, and it can also include things like trailers and pickup trucks and any apparatus or equipment that it uses, brakes, graders, uh, you know, any of that type of equipment that it might use in a landscaping, you know, skid steers and that kinda stuff, so...
You're just trying to impress us with those pieces?
No, no, uh, I never try to impress anybody. Trying to think of stuff that's not coming to me, but that's, that's stuff that's...
What about strawberry, is strawberry classified as a same category?
Uh, yeah, technically it would be, yes.
What about, uh, uh, what are they, the mulch?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the type of material I'm talking about. It's, it's gonna be bark mulch and perhaps pea stone and things of that nature that they may, may use in their landscaping business. Topsoil perhaps, compost, I'm not really sure. But they've outlined an area in their site plan where that's going to go. And it's not so much that we need to concentrate on where it is in the site plan, but whether or not the outside storage of materials on that site anywhere is acceptable.
Is reasonable to be free.
Yeah.
Okay. And just last piece of that, it's really a fascinating process to try and make sure that you walk it through steps to get the best results. And so, we'll start off, we'll introduce itself and we'll go from there.
Great, thank you. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, my name is Lee Allen with Northeast Civil Solutions, representing Go Green Landscaping, Inc. Also joined tonight by Dave Milewsky, the president of Go Green Landscaping.
Did you spell that name for us?
M.E.L.E.V.S.K.Y.
Thank you.
Milewsky.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I recuse myself, the, to the board that Mr. Allen and I share a board that we sit on together? And I would like the board to know that we have a relationship and it will not in any way change my opinion on the case. I think I can separate myself from it.
Actually, that's the same situation with me. And I, it's totally irrelevant to, to, in my opinion, unless somebody wants to vote on it.
I'm good.
Uh, just so you know, it's the Friends of Scarborough Hockey is the board that we're talking about. So, everybody okay with, do you wanna vote on it or are you okay? So, okay, everybody's fine with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the property to be developed is off of Royal Ridge Road which is down by the marsh. It's directly behind the People's United Bank and the Family Wellness Chiropractic Center that was just constructed about a year ago and diagonally across from the classic flooring building. The area directly behind or up the hill is, is wetland and it is, also there's a subdivision up on the hill that's developed from land that was previously owned by Linwood Higgins. It's Plantation Drive and Fawn Run. Our proposed building that you're, you're looking at there on the screen is no closer than six hundred feet to the nearest building. And in between, there's a wetland and a very lush, thick forest. So, there's really no chance of this being seen. It's, it's really just the outdoor storage of sand, loam, stone, bark mulch that will be placed on a paved surface separated by concrete block behind the building. You may notice, a plan I have has a different orientation on the building, as Brian mentioned, it's, that's something we're working through with the planning board, but irrelevant of the orientation of the building. These materials are intended to be stored behind it, so they can't be seen from Royal Ridge. And also to further screen, we're planning an arborvitae kind of landscape screen around the edge of pavement, so, you know, in addition to the forest, there's, there's gonna be even a further buffer. So, we think that we've met the intent of the zoning to keep this screened and discreet. The business will operate during normal business hours, so there's no, you know, you're not worried about a loader in the middle of the night loading a salt truck or something like that, this is all stuff that's gonna happen. They're gonna load up during, in the morning when they head off to a site and maybe offload it in the evening when they get back. I think this is a very straightforward and straightforward request for special exception. The use of this type of establishment is allowed under the B three zone. And with that, turn it over to the board with any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of notes, that road, as far as I understand it, there's no residents on that road that strictly...
On Royal Ridge? Correct, it's all, it's all basically commercial, right now it's classic flooring and the Royal Ridge church.
Church, and also I guess I give the two other buildings, the, the medical center.
Right, and that actually is fronted on Route One, so it's the, the Family Wellness Chiropractic Center, the People's United Bank, and then there's kind of a vacant lot there, and then it's lumber liquidators is adjacent to that.
Okay, great. So, the process we need to go through is special exception. The first round, we're really going to be spending time just walking through questions and then we'll come back. That's how we should be handling it, the same way, the same process as the planning board?
Lee, could you point out the area on the new design where you've sort of tentatively planned for the outside storage to be, just for the board's clarification?
So here's, this is in shady and gray, it's Royal Ridge Road. Here is our, our building, the previous showing, this configuration is out this way. So the area we're talking about is storage is right here, screened by the building. Here is the paved surface, our headed trucks back in, now pick up, and leave back this way. These are here, our arborvitae kind of landscape buffers, and we're talking about planning right around the paved area.
Is there a mic right there, Lee?
There isn't.
There isn't, okay. Just turn that microphone around a few bit. Question for you on that same comment, where is the church relative to...
Church is right here.
Church, and that's their parking lot, okay. And Route One is horizontal?
Right here, yeah, the, the marsh is over here.
Okay, and the homes up top across there, that's all across the...
Yes, this is Scotto Hill, this is Plantation Drive, Fawn Run. This area actually long ago was a waste paper site that has been filled over, and that's why it wasn't developed as part of this subdivision.
Okay. Did they fix, did they get any water problems there? That's higher, that's higher than you though, isn't it?
Much higher, and there's a wet, the wetland, this area right here is all wetland, flows out to the marsh.
They're higher anyways, doesn't really matter. Okay, thanks.
Sorry, and you started to ask me about procedure? Yeah, I think that you'd wanna go down through the special exception standards, A through I standards, and, and discuss how the applicant's answers and responses on the application address those issues.
Great. Why don't we take each one separately, we'll talk about that individually and go from there.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question before we move on, if that's okay?
Sure.
Or a couple of questions, what are the volumes that you're looking at storing?
Truckload of mulch.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, please.
If you could state your name again and address.
David Milewsky, Go Green Landscaping. Typically, the type of products we're talking about are mulch, and it's seasonal also. Kind of mulch is a heavy product we're using in the spring, and as spring goes into summer, we're pretty much done mulching.
What about top soils?
Uh, top soils, again, that's seasonal. You might do some plantings in the spring and again in the fall, but during the summer, it's typically not too heavy with a top...
Forty yards, still?
Right, yeah, well, top soils would be more about a twenty to twenty-five yard delivery, same with compost.
But you'd only have one delivery at a time?
Right.
Okay.
Right, one delivery at a time, and then mulch typically comes in about a forty yard delivery.
Okay. What about hardscapes, more stones, uh, sand?
Right, occasionally we'll have, if we have a hardscape project going on, we'll have some crushed stone on hand. It's not something we stock typically for a long period of time.
Okay. But if you had them, stones would be again, maybe ten to twenty yards?
Right, yeah, those amounts would be even less.
Sand, maybe a little bit more, but...
Even, you know, even sand would be, be less, that'd be in the five to ten yard area.
Any other materials you'd store that would have, this is going towards my next question.
Right.
Any other materials that you, you would store that may either silt up, sand up, or send a color liquid to a body of water with runoff?
No.
Okay.
No, and even, you know, the nature of our business, we do organic applications. Even our bark mulches, they're all natural, they're not dyed synthetically, so, everything we have is natural.
But you, you will not be required either by the DEP or the town to have soil protection from runoff from a pile of sand or topsoil or anything like that?
So, so as part of what we're doing through the planning board is our site needs to meet the stormwater ordinance for the town of Scarborough. That being said, anything that runs off is gonna be captured in a catch basin.
You've answered my question, thank you.
Other questions? So, are you retail establishments or are you gonna be strictly wholesale? Both, so it's not, no, nobody's gonna be driving in looking for a truckload of, of sand and...
No, absolutely not. Excuse me, um, the only people that would really be coming would be customers to view, you know, design type ideas and things like that. But, uh, any products we have on site would be for us to use for our customers that we'd be transporting from the site to, you know, a homeowner's house.
It just surprised me that you'd only need like one truckload of material on each one of the bays, I'm assuming you're going to build...
Well, you know, it's, um...
And there's not really any answer to that, I just...
Yeah, it's typically, you know, we just use it as quickly as it comes in. I don't like to store a lot of it on hand if we don't have to, you know, if it rains and gets wet, it's harder to, to move, maneuver and work with. And our suppliers, they're really, you know, twenty-four hours within calling them, they'll have it out of your sight, so it's not a, an issue of be difficult to get.
And same thing with hardscapes, uh, stone, block, that kinda stuff?
That's, and even those products typically, we take them directly from the supplier to the, to the work site. We don't even, because they're heavy and hard to, to handle.
Would you be taking the residuals if you didn't use it all, would it come back to the property and be stored on site?
Uh, yes, they could be, but they're, again, typically, we try not to have too much leftovers due to the cost of them and anything that is left over, a lot of times we'll send back to the supplier too.
Okay. On that, you got, is it five buildings that you're looking at, outbuildings, is that correct, along with it, or is that...
No, I think that what you're seeing on this plan is more of the master plan. We're just looking at the single building, at the twelve thousand square foot building.
Okay, so that's all that is, and then the master plan's eventually going to...
It's just a, it's a, it's a hypothetical future of what happens if we decide to build this out, what would it look like?
Okay, so they've got nothing to do with, so, so are you building like twelve foot high or twelve, whatever foot, um...
Probably five foot.
Block or whatever?
Five foot high concrete block, just enough to keep the material so they're not mixed together.
Okay. Uh, great. Any other questions?
And in the, the equipment that you're gonna have on the property, you, you intend to store all that inside the, the building? And is that going to, is there, is there sufficient space in there to, to meet the future needs, or is this, is this just really what you need for today?
Um, well, the property is designed to house my business, Go Green Landscaping. And, you know, basically in the center of the L-shaped building is where our office space will be. One five thousand square foot garage wing is where my business will be, and then there'll be another five thousand square foot garage wing. So in that other five thousand square foot wing that we won't be using, I'm gonna divide it into three units, that'll be rental units. And as my business continues to expand, we'll slowly move into those areas.
Great idea, okay.
Will those be office space, or will it also be...
They'll be directed towards small contractors, so there'll be an overhead garage door along with a small office and bathroom.
Yeah. So, is that similar, uh, you even know that those, those little condos that they did down on Washington that they, they sort of, they're, they're commercial kinda, is that kinda the idea?
Yeah, yeah, it's about two hundred and fifty square foot of office space and about a twelve hundred square feet of garage workshop space.
Yeah, if you have waters, the bathroom, kitchen, shower, not, it may not have a kitchen, but it could be.
Yeah, it's just office space and, you know, shower, bathroom type.
Okay. Other questions from the board? So, we'll start through the questions on the standards, but then we need, there's another layer that we'll go from there, okay? So the first is, "Froze use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, omissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation."
Correct, yes.
And why don't we take each one of these on, so we get a feel, because this is just, this part here is just the exploratory section, right?
Did we open a public hearing or did we...
We have not yet, but we can.
I didn't know if that was, what order you wanted to take that.
Well, I'll open it up now, we'll just, we'll stop there for a second, I'll open up. Anybody from the public that's not here, like to speak? Do you have any letters, phone calls?
No.
No letters, no phone calls, I'll close the public hearing part. Thank you for the political, the proper way. So let's go back to the question. I think you mentioned some things about you're really containing it, and that's all really part of the, the planning board process.
Correct, it, it's gonna be placed on pavement separated by concrete block, and the area will be graded such that if it rains out, it can't wash off the site, it'll be washed into the drainage system.
Uh, any questions on them, on A?
Well, the only thing we hadn't addressed was since it's gonna be on pavement, there shouldn't be a dust issue. So that'll, that'll help from a dust standpoint with vehicles going in and out.
Good, okay. That's a good point. Uh, B, "The froze use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity."
Okay, so in this situation, where we're located, there's no sidewalks, there's really no pedestrian use, this is more of, even though it's in the B three zone, it's more of light commercial use. So just about everybody will get there and to and from in vehicles. So we don't anticipate any conflict with pedestrians.
I do have one question on that one. When you go out on Route One, is there a turning lane between the north and southbound lanes? Is there a common turning lane between the two at that point?
There is not, currently. We have done a traffic analysis, it hasn't been submitted to the planning board yet. The traffic analysis says with the amount of traffic that we're gonna generate from this facility that, that the north-south without a turning lane is still okay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Tied to that, that, that question, as far as the properties around it, that's all farm zone, right? It's all, all its zones?
There is some RF zone around it, um...
Yeah, RF is located to that wetland side, that back edge.
I didn't think the other side was, was, I thought it was all RF, but I wasn't positive.
Um, to be honest with you, I don't...
The only reason I bring it up is because I really don't see any effects on residential homes by this project. So that's really the reason I bring it up, and RF, um, whether or not somebody could build back there or not, I don't know. But it is allowed in our zone, something like this would not require a special permit. So, I just bring that for point of discussion. "The froze use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood."
So this area will not be accessed by the general public, it's for employees only, so that should reduce the safety problem immensely. And the materials stored on site are earth and materials, we don't anticipate any hazards with those materials.
Are you gating it or are you not?
We're not, no.
I don't see any reason to, but I just wanted to ask. Anybody have any thoughts, questions on that?
No, I don't wish any real issues.
"The froze use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies."
Yeah, I think we found over that, it's all paved, it's, it's the only place it could run off if there was any erosion into a closed drainage system, so, that right there keeps it all contained on site.
Can you explain, just for people to understand what you mean by enclosed...
So sure, downstream of this, there's gonna be a series of catch basins to pick up the rainwater that, that runs off of the pavement. There is an existing detention pond on the site that we're going to rehabilitate. So, in each catch basin, before it flows out of pipe, there's what's called a sump, it's an area below the pipe where sediment can fill up. So that's where if anything was to wash out, it would fill into that sump before it would get washed downstream. Therefore, effectively, we're reducing any potential erosion downstream of this, or washing.
Really no difference than a septic tank?
Same idea.
So it's basically just a, whatever round bin, pull down while it's raining?
Yeah, usually they're full of water ninety percent of the time.
Uh, anybody else have questions on that? Yeah, not in the shoreline zone, one corner of the area is, but you don't own that, so it doesn't matter, but, see, not in the shoreline zone.
Which just nicks the corner of our property, that's, there's already a detention pond dug there, and, but that's, it's...
Does it nick it, or does it, um...
I believe it does.
I had the...
When you say nick it, you mean it abuts it?
Yeah, it just shows at the corner there.
So, it's hard to see, the shoreline zone goes across here, it's cut back off of the, uh, the marsh, and this, this shaded area, the processed area here is the detention pond. So this little bit is actually the shoreline zone, our development is on this ground.
And so we, we'll need to look at the shoreline zone in accordance along with that because of that. Next, oh, anybody have questions on that?
Yeah, the development's out of the shoreline zone, so that's not an issue.
"The applicant has sufficient right, title or interest, and we saw the paperwork in here, so we, that's pretty obvious, and if anybody has any questions." "The applicant has technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and comply with all conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to section five of this section."
So in addition to our company, Northeast Civil Solutions doing the engineering permitting, custom concepts owned by Mike Richmond's doing the building design, it's also a Scarborough business. And I believe there's also paperwork that's been filed showing financial capacity to complete the project.
Great. Is he gonna build it like he did his, his own building, 'cause that'd be gorgeous. Is it really?
Yeah, so, on that...
This is, this is more for fun than anything, but Mike Richmond builds a beautiful building. That's mine.
That, that's the colored rendering of the building, so you notice the garage doors are more of the barn style doors, so...
Eight twelve foot?
Uh, ten foot.
Ten foot. That's nice looking. Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Mike Richmond's very good. "Froze use is compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation."
Right, we said that would work typical business hours.
Six probably start, I'm assuming.
Typical day is eight hours, seven thirty to four.
And I, it, are you gonna be doing any winter operations, uh, snow removal and stuff?
We do, uh, snow plowing in the winter.
And in that case, if you're, if, if you're needing to come back for another load of sand, uh, middle of the night, there might be some operations at that time then?
There could be. Typically, uh, we use a, an ice melt that we typically apply before the storm. So we'll apply before even snow starts to fall. So it's not usually a big issue in the middle of the night going back for, for salt or sand. The only time that would probably happen is during a nice storm or something like that where we were under really icy conditions.
Just coming to that? All right, so that's the standards, as far as that is concerned. Now let's go to... "The froze use," this is section C you're on, "the froze use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different." Is that the repeat? It's a repeat.
Yes.
It's a repeat. There's something else in here though. It's a repeat, there's something else in here, though.
I'm not sure what you're.
No, I'm okay, sorry.
I think I know what you're looking for, some special exceptions also have performance standards to deal with them, this one doesn't.
It doesn't, okay.
So, we're confined to the A through I criteria.
Do we have to deal with this issue here, like a variance?
No.
You don't have to deal with it all?
It's a non-issue. Again, the board's focus now is on the appropriateness based on the A through I criteria which you just read through, is the outdoor storage appropriate for approval of a special exception use in that zone in this context of this facility? That's really the purview of the board, they can place any conditions on that that they wish to, that seem reasonable, or make recommendation for planning board, you know, to that effect. Planning board is gonna be digging into the detail of the site design, all of the issues, environmental issues, and citing issues, and building, uh, design standards for the building and all of that good stuff. Our review is solely about the outdoor storage use, and so that's really where the focus is.
On the vehicle issue, if we don't approve allowing vehicles, that could be a problem, so do you, are you, do you see at any point you're going to need to have some vehicles that might be outside, like maybe it's a excavator, or was it the piece of equipment you mentioned?
Skid steer.
Skid steer.
Everybody has one of those.
Um, no, I think the garage space will be adequate to house, it definitely what we have currently, and in the future, if we expand into the other side, we'd have plenty of room there, too.
What about some of the potential tenants?
Um, that, you know, we'd have to make sure that they didn't have, you know, storage that was unpermitted, um, but I, you know, I, I don't plan on having, um, any, you know, I'm picturing like maybe a carpenter or a plumber, not a big operation, 'cause it's not gonna be a very big garage space with about twelve hundred square feet.
I just don't wanna have to, if we don't, I'd rather give you the leeway so you don't have to come back if the board doesn't care, and we can find a spot on the site that would allow for vehicle parking, to me that might help.
What about plows, in the winter?
Um.
Trucks with plows on them, maybe?
Um, in the winter, uh, yeah, you know, they'd probably be, you know, either in the garage space, I would think ideally, so they're not getting covered in the snow, um.
Okay.
So, I think there'd be adequate room for that.
Good, thank you. So, realistically, we've heard the presentation as far as we're walking through, I think it's pretty straightforward, I like the layout, I, have you looked at any other locations you could possibly put the, uh, the storage units, and are there any pluses or minuses?
We have, and based on the master plan that we all looked at earlier, if we put it one way, you know, it's kinda facing what potential future development is, you know, by putting on this side of the building, between the wetland and the building, there's really not much that can see it from there, I mean, it's pretty well screened and out of sight. There could be potential for an office in that upper triangular portion of the lot, that, that's, it's down the road, but still, that's why we've got that, our provided screen there to keep that out of sight, so, we think no matter what happens there, we've got it screened from every direction.
Okay, good. Uh, sewer there?
There is, water and sewer in Royal Ridge Road.
Okay, and all underground power?
Uh, it's above ground, but I believe we're proposing underground to our, our building.
Other questions from the board?
Is there, having those, the outside storage bins on that right side of the building, is there sufficient room to get around there if you needed to park heavy equipment back there at some point?
This is a kind of a blown-up version of that, so this is the area we've actually looked at, we have turning tests we can use in our CAD program to show, you know, trucks backing into each of these spots and, and without, without coming close to the corner of the building, and so there is, there's plenty of room to get in and out of that area.
Okay, that part that goes straight up, what is that?
So, that's, that's a future master plan kinda thing, and same with that building over there, we're just focused on building this portion right in there.
Okay.
The purpose of the master plan is just to show the potential for the lot development going forward, they can kinda look at everything to make sure that you're not, at this point, uh, they're not limiting the potential of the lot for development, so that they have to come back and do some kind of a, you know, a change or.
And that's kinda the concept of this.
It's the whole concept, because it's five acres or more, they wanna see how that whole property could be built out, if it's a smaller property, it's not as big a point or as big an issue.
Actually, it's really, basically it's saying, look, let's think ahead.
Exactly, yeah, make sure we're not putting a building where a road should go.
And I think, I think typically, too, if the building, if the building, if the business should grow exponentially, that also is excess capacity for additional storage, inside storage, and that kinda stuff, too, so it shows, it shows where things can go on the lot to accommodate the type of businesses that could actually co-locate there as well as the growth of that business.
Well, I'll just state my position on this, uh, we can go from there and take a vote if.
I think, I think the proper thing would be to just go back through each of those criteria and just do an up or down vote, uh, to make sure that everyone's, um.
On the same page?
Feels that they've met the criteria, and that would go into the minutes then, is.
That would be great, so that would be, uh, um. Okay, so we'll just run right through these again, guys, and, uh, just a verbal vote as to how you feel about it, okay? The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
I agree.
Oh, yeah. Everybody's, I'm okay, everybody okay with it?
And if you could just, just quickly state why you're okay with it?
Okay, so, as I see it, number one, the, I like the fact that they've got the drainage system that they're using, I like the fact that it's gonna be driveway as opposed to soft, and realistically where it's sitting, it just seems to make sense. Anybody ever bring other issues on that?
I'd have to agree with that, I'd also like to add that, I think if it were fertilizers and stuff that were being kept outside, that might be a little different situation, but because of the type of materials, I think we're in good shape.
I agree.
Any other comments? B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
I agree, I think it's, um, it's pretty clear that it's not gonna be a retail location just, just for his employees, and I don't think that will, will change things that much in that location.
Yeah, I think very limited traffic going in and out of there, I don't see a problem at all with that.
I would agree as well. I think the applicant also said that they were doing a traffic study, so that should cover it.
Um, I think it's actually probably the best place for a business like this, it's, you wouldn't put residences there, might put a nice rank, but, not anymore, so, it is actually a space that we looked at as, as a joke, for those who are wondering. The proposed use will, uh, proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. Let's start right down again.
I agree, I couldn't see how that would pose any issues for safety or, you know, stress on the fire, police protection, just being a wholesale location for a landscape business.
I think unless they decide to throw some massive parties there, I think we're in good shape.
I would agree, I don't see anything.
I agree, no issue.
I don't see that, I don't see there's any, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Attractive nuisance that the outside, that was really probably my biggest concern, is would there be an attractive nuisance, and I bring to reference something like, uh, Blue Rock in Westbrook, or, uh, there's another place up on 302 in Raymond, Naples, that have a bunch of stones and other items there, but these don't, so I see no attractive nuisance, and I think that's really the trigger of why you'd have the police there, so I'm fine with it.
Excuse me, is there any plan to gate access to any of those areas?
At this point, there isn't, um, that doesn't mean that there won't be in the future, but I don't see the need presently for, for that.
Okay. The proposed use will not create, uh, result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on the water supplies?
I agree, it seems like they've taken the right steps to, to address that, with their drainage and their sump catches.
I agree with it, with the catches, we're good.
I'd agree with catch racing. I agree.
The planning board does a great job of managing that, it's something I typically don't worry about for that exact reason. Uh, proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's, uh, gonna be a nice fit down there, perfect, like you said, Mike, perfect, nice looking building, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think especially with the proximity to other buildings, it seems that there's plenty of room in between there, so I agree.
I would agree with the proximity and everything. I agree, it's good application for this property.
Yeah, I think also the scale seems to work really nicely, um, and actually, two of those buildings, I think, are metal buildings, and this is gonna.
This would be a sided building.
This would be a sided building, so it's actually, in my opinion, a nicer presentation. Um, we're not gonna deal with the shoreline zone issue, uh, because we don't need to. The application is, the applicant has sufficient right, title, or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out proposed use, and I think we've already determined that's the case, nobody has any questions of that.
Right.
The applicant has a technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section, and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 5 of this section.
I agree.
I would agree. I would agree.
The applicant's shown that.
To me, it's pretty, having Northeast Civil and your other.
Custom Concepts.
Yeah, Custom Concepts, obviously, you're picking people that know what they're doing, and I'm sure it'll come out well, so I'm not worried about that. Um, proposed use will be compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation? I think he's answered that. Anybody have any questions, or anything you're worried about with that issue?
No, I think it's a limited amount that, uh, that it would be, would be in particular circumstances of harsh weather, and I, I think that's, that's an acceptable use of that anyway.
You ready? Maybe I'm.
No, I'd agree, he's answered the question on when and if, they may need to be there.
I agree, and I think they've also given us conservative hours of operation, if they had come back and said six to six, I think that's fine.
James, I made a mistake in not allowing you to speak with us, we typically do that in a meeting of voting member, and, uh, anything you want, like to say, speak about, talk about, uh, that you know from your experience, or we'd love to get your input, and, uh, because of, kinda back there, kinda missed you, so it's, I apologize.
Of course, well, that's fine.
In any meeting, non-voting members have the right to have full input, you could normally ask the exact same questions as the rest of the board, uh, the only difference is that specific vote doesn't count. We'll still ask you to vote, though.
Of course, and I, as we're going through these, I agree with each of the items that have already been described and spoken through.
Any concerns or anything that you see that should be brought up, or something we might have missed?
No, not from my perspective.
Thank you, again, I apologize for that.
If I just clarify on the item F, the shoreline zone issue, the reason that that didn't have to be reviewed is because the very corner of the parcel where there is no development planned is the shoreline zoning area, the rest of the parcel is not in shoreline zone.
Now, unlike the variance appeal which requires, says, that kicks it out, we think variance.
Yeah, yeah, this is not that.
This is not that, there you go, so that's not an issue, which is great, 'cause, all right, so, does anybody feel that anything needs to be added, restricted, limited? Do you wanna talk, I feel that there's no need to talk about shrubbery, um, I think they'll handle that just fine over at the planning board. Um, any, any issues, anything you think that would be appropriate for your vote?
No further comment.
Okay, well then, uh, move for motion.
Move to approve 2549 as presented.
Second.
Second, give your choice. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's unanimous, so, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation, so, I'm sure it will work well, good luck.
Thank you.
And, uh, that is the meeting, except for our zoning board comments, and also, uh, Mr. Longstaff, this is what he'd like to walk through, so why don't we start with Mr. Longstaff's? He promises he will be out before the hockey game, sorry.
I lied.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chair. Um, over the weekend, the, uh, the planning board, as well as some of the councils here in the town, went and did some work down in Higgins Beach, and I'd like to thank the town for the effort that they've made to review that zoning and improve upon it, so, and I appreciate the people from the town and, uh, people that came that had interest and went to that meeting and also gave input, so it was a good process, and I appreciate all the efforts the people have made down here at, uh, at the town office, so thank you.
Did you go to any of those, or have any follow-up on what happened at those charrettes?
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, the charrettes were, I don't have any of the final products, um, I didn't get a chance today to review.
But it was productive?
It was very productive, so it was always there for, on a couple of different occasions, um, and had great comments, and I thank you for that. Um, the work sessions were very well attended, the feedback that the consultant team, uh, got from the attendees was very, very, um, helpful, uh, for the most part, it stayed on track, um, we had great attendance from the Higgins Beach neighborhood down there, um, it was just, uh, we were very, very pleased, and I think that the work products that were developed, what I saw of them, uh, before I left on Saturday, uh, for example, uh, some mapping that they were working on, it's gonna be just, just fantastic, because it's actually going to identify those parcels that have the most restrictive elements coming at them, shoreline zoning and floodplain management and coastal sand dune regulations, and we can actually flag those, those lots and start to develop land use, proposed, proposed land use standards, considerations, um, that will really help clarify what those folks can do with those properties under the regulations that are currently in place from other agencies, and then the town can work at trying to make its ordinances as friendly as possible to the type of development and the goals and the plans for the folks, what they wanna do with their properties down there, without having to continually come back to the zoning board for, you know, permission to do the kind of the normal, ordinary things that anyone would wanna do with their property, so, I thought it was very, very good, um, the weekend flew by for my, I don't usually like to work too hard on the weekend, but I was there for, for a good bit of it, and, um, and it flew by, because it was just really interesting, really engaging, um.
That's good to hear.
The consultant team, uh, the comments that I got about the consultant team principal group, uh, is their name, uh, was very positive, how they presented the material, how they, how they gave folks the options that they could consider and got the feedback, and sort of kept the discussion on, on, uh, topic, and, um, just really good, really good weekend, I couldn't have been more pleased, to be honest with you.
That's good to hear, and it's not, somebody could try, try to link this to spot zoning, this is totally different, because spot zoning would be taking something that hasn't been there yet and putting it on there or changing, this is strictly looking at the realities, this is micro, this is micro zoning in essence, would be more specific, is that a good way to call it?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's moving away from the type of land use ordinance that we're all sort of used to, that says, you got this amount of setback and this amount of frontage, and you can cover, and it gets into a form-based code that gives them more options and alternatives. If you're willing to do this, then you can have this, and, and the further back away from the property lines, you can go higher, and it just gives them different options, and it's not, not as rigid in, um, there's a term, I'm trying to think of it, and it's just.
Restrictive.
Yeah, well, yeah, somewhat restrictive, um, it's very prescriptive, you know, so, this, this form-based code is, is, you know, hopefully with the ideas that they gathered from the residents, it's going to allow them to get back to the character of Higgins Beach instead of, one lady asked, are you trying to force town zoning from other areas? "Are you trying to force town zoning from other areas onto us at Higgins Beach?" And I said, "It's actually the exact opposite. We've been forcing town zoning on Higgins Beach. We're trying to create zoning that's Higgins Beach influenced for Higgins Beach."
That's a great question, okay.
It was. It was a great question, and she thanked me for that answer because her and her husband were very, very concerned that we were trying to force something that was completely out of character. And I said, "You've been living with something that's completely out of character. We're trying to get you something that's more in character with what you're doing."
So, does this tie to the, the walkable neighborhood concept? Is that, is that how they're leaning it? Is that...
It, it definitely respects the fact that it's a very pedestrian-oriented, you know, beach community. Uh, most of the residents down there walk everywhere that they go, and it's only the people from outside coming to use the beach that drive in. So, yeah, that's, that's gotta be respected in the whole, that whole street view, you know, of, of making it a walkable neighborhood and putting the parking to the side and into the rear of the, the buildings instead of out on the street. Um, you know, all of those components were discussed and, and parking's a big issue down there.
How about the, uh, the traffic floating? Did that come up at all?
Uh, yeah, I think traffic flow was discussed somewhat, but we were really trying to, we were really trying to focus on the lots, the lot development and what homeowners could do with their properties. Traffic is sorta, it's a, it's a, it's an area that we're not really diff- dealing with in zoning, so...
Any other comments that you got that were, uh, sort of unique?
Um, nothing that comes to mind right now, but, yeah, I just, uh, I just wanna reiterate it was a very productive weekend. I think it's gonna be a, a good process going forward because of the, the involvement and, uh, the willingness of the residents to get involved and engaged.
That's great. Thank you for going to that meeting. I wasn't able to. So, uh, I don't know if anybody else got a chance, but I think it's great, even though you guys are the dri- the driving force of this. Uh, I think it's fantastic. Okay, uh, anybody else, any other board members have any comments or questions that comes to mind?
I just apologize for being late. I had a work commitment that ran a few minutes late.
No problems. And I guess it's your show.
Okay. Um, just really quickly, um, Karen and I got into a discussion about the minutes from last meeting and, and she, um, stated to me that sometimes it's difficult for her to capture, when we're going through the decision-making process, what is she supposed to be capturing exactly? And I wanted to just get back to our process a little bit in, in making sure that we have a clear process in any of the decision-making. And you, you did a, I thought, a, a good job tonight because you, you read through the criteria, you discussed the answers that the applicant... Sometimes we sort of forget to really dig into the answers and read those into the, the minutes. Um, the applicant sometimes does and sometimes doesn't. So, Karen's problem is that is, it's, she's never sure because it's not always the same and we don't follow a really good process every time. So, it really helps her in creating the minutes, which are the record of the meeting. So, if anyone wants to come and say, "I wonder how the zoning board came to that decision," they're basically going to find most of the meat of that information in the minutes. So, they're, they're really important and to help her do a, a, you know, as good a job as she can do, clearly spelling out what the board said and what the findings were and what the conclusions were, we really need to get back to the findings of fact and conclusions of law, which you've all heard that before. And, and sometimes we have a tendency to get away from that and, and we kinda, everybody knows what they think, but actually stating it for the record and getting it down on paper is really important. And so, I just wanted to remind, I think you all have a copy of MMA's, uh, zoning board manual, zoning board of appeals manual. And in there, I think this is on page, well, it's page sixty-two there, but I don't know what the actual page is. Forty-five, I guess, of the, of the manual, there's a section that talks about findings and conclusions. And just to remember, you know, the findings of fact are statements by the board summarizing the basic facts involved in a particular application. They could include things like the name of the applicant, their relationship to the property, the location of the property, the basic description of the project, key elements of the proposal, um, so on and so forth. Those are findings of fact, and those sort of need to get into the record.
So, in the past, and I'm guilty of that, in the past, to me, the applicant, uh, every time I think of the findings of fact, it's basically, it's just, this is exactly what you just said.
Yeah.
So, I've always taken that as, mm, it's on record, but we need to...
It, it sort of is because it's in the application.
Yeah, and so I've always avoided, just to, because it sounded kind of odd to go through that page.
Right.
So, are you saying that we should be using that page from now on?
Um, well, you, you should at least be going down through that front, that cover page of the application just to make sure that, okay, so you are in fact, you do, your address is this, you are in fact, living there, um, and that's, you know, just to kinda re, more or less regurgitate that, that fact. But where it's really gets important is in, in the meat of the, the request, whether it's an appeal or, or, uh, tonight it was a special exception approval. You know, those elements of that, I mean, it's pretty easy to pick off their name and, and address and that sort of stuff, but facts also get into the meat of it.
Now, can I stop you there for a second?
Sure.
'Cause I thought that the findings of fact are strictly the ABCs and the, the conclusions were a separate issue as opposed to being...
No, I'm not talking about conclusions. I'm still on finding of fact.
So, finding of fact, the way you're describing it, which is different than I understood, is...
I'm not saying the, I'm, I'm not getting into the conclusions. I'm not talking about conclusions.
I'm sorry.
Just, just findings of fact, and findings of fact can be statements that, uh, evidence submitted by the applicant beyond what's shown on the plan. So, it can start to hit on some of those things that your conclusions are going to kinda, um, uh, flesh out in more detail. Okay, so that, so the conclusions of law are the statements linking the specific facts covered in the findings to the performance standards that you're reviewing. So, for example, if they say, uh, it, it's gonna be a, a five thousand square foot building. And, and so how does that link to a perform- is there a performance standard that that links to? Or, we're going to have six hundred square feet of storage area for materials outside. How does that link back to the, you know, so you're drawing those, you're drawing your conclusions from the finding of fact and from the answers that are presented. It, it's not, you know, it's not so much, I, I don't wanna get into too much detail about that. It's just sort of separating those two and then linking them up. You know, you, you, you have one process that lists the finding of fact, then the conclusion of law links the findings to what the applicant's stating is how they're answering and responding to those questions. And it's, it, it's not, you know, it's, it's not easy necessarily to do that all the time. But if you just sort of follow that process, um, maybe using tonight's, um, appeal as an example, I don't wanna, we've closed the meeting on that, so I don't wanna go into... But, but, you know, using that example of how much area is be- is being devoted to, uh, material, outside material storage. In our ordinance, we're not restricting that. We're just talking about the use itself. So, is, is the outside storage a, for example, if the outside storage was far more space than the interior of the building, then it might have been a concern to the board to say, you know, "It looks like your outside storage is overwhelming the primary use." So, you could draw conclusions from that. Um, it, and, and again, just, just making sure that we go through those steps, reading the criteria and what the applicant said. And so, the conclusion was, for example, in the first one, that the storage a- area will contain soil material on concrete blocks and there is adequate, um, adequate paved surface area to contain the materials and adequate, that's, that's your conclusion. They've adequately addressed that requirement.
Challenge, ask questions, guys, as you go along, but I would think that would be a finding of fact, not a conclusion.
If I can add to that, Mr. Chair? Like, for example, when I was asking the questions about, uh, it, you will not contaminate the soil of the water. Finding of fact would be, they have hard surfaces, they're, they have block walls around all their piles. They have collection basins outside of that. Those are all findings of facts. And your conclusion would be, based on that they have collection ability, that they have addressed it. They're going through the planning board, meeting their requirements, then we can conclude that we will not have an issue and we agree.
That, that they'll adequately address those, those runoffs.
When does the trigger, for instance, you asked that question.
Mm-hmm.
He answered those answers to your, the board's satisfaction.
Right.
To me, that was part of the findings of fact.
It is.
Correct, like when I was asking...
But we didn't call it. Now, we're going to go into the findings of fact.
Right, right, yeah, you don't, it's, some, in some, some boards have, um, they have different formats for actually making their decision where they actually separate those out.
I've seen them both three, yeah.
Yeah, we don't do that, so it's not necessarily gonna be that we're gonna say, "Here's the finding of fact." But if, if we clearly go through that process, it's gonna be easier for Karen and, and, and along with me after the fact, if we go back and look at them as she's creating them, it's, I can, it's gonna be easier for us to kinda create those findings when we write them.
What it, what it comes down to is if this ever, if we ever have an appeal that goes to court, they'll look at our notes and say, "It's not that good. Let's go to the videotape," right? And the videotape will give them the detail and you'll, they'll have to pull the findings of fact and conclusions out of the videotape, so I...
That's the only real record, anyway. That's, uh...
I agree. If we formalize it, it would make it easier to have a written document that would make it clear from a legal standpoint.
So, let me just kinda tie that back. So, instead of when I'm, I'm using the term, it, we, we typically go through the process of, uh, the applicant gives a presentation. We might get some light questions at that point. Uh, we'll open up the public, post-public hearing, come back. To me, the finding of facts begins when I u- when I say, "Questions from the board." Would that be the, the trigger for, is that the trigger of findings of fact?
I, I think the finding of fact, it actually comes down when you're doing your conclusions. You say, "Based on these items in the finding of fact," you know, they, they told me, they told me that they had, they were gonna have forty yards of, of mulch. They were gonna have ten yards of sand, ten yards, and based on those volumes, I believe the runoff will not have the ability to contaminate since they're collecting it. You know, those are all finding of facts that you say, "So, I conclude that we're gonna be protected. There won't be any waterway contamination because of those findings of fact."
But that's gonna combine and we get two problems with that. Number one, we usually get, "Yes, I think it's okay."
That's what I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to get away from. I'm trying to get away from, "Do you think he met it? Yes. Do you think he met it? Yes. Do you think he met it? No." Why? Why do you think he met it? And it doesn't have to be a lengthy explanation. It's just pointing out exactly what Mr. Loizel said, for example, yes.
And I think it'd be clear...
Well, because of the, because of the surface area that they're using, the type of surface that they're using and the containment that they've, they, they're going to design.
And the volume of materials.
They have taken away the unsanitary and unhelpful condition.
Right.
Okay, so let's come back to where it crosses up, so now I've, uh, oh, I'm gonna miss the game. So, uh... So, funny.
Kind of you, you're the one asking all the questions.
You're asking all the questions.
I know, I'm saying, but, hey, you know, it's a...
Can we, can we slow it down for the chair so he understands?
I wanted the Bru- I wanted the Bruins to win, but who doesn't matter? Um, so, the, the way I'm hearing this, and this is where I struggle with the, the separations of the two issues. When we ask, well, let's just take for instance, the first, or the, the special exception, whatever the first one was, I can remember what the first item is. Uh, proposed use will not create unsanitary and unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions of air, water, or other aspects of design or operation. If we're going through with that statement, and I usually will go and ask each person what they think, uh, nine times out of ten, I get, "Yeah, I'm okay."
That's what I'd like to do.
I think we get better answers at the stage of them asking questions before we get to this. To me, and the, the asking questions section is in fact, the findings of fact. And all of the information that, if we agree with it, that should be on the record, so it...
If, if that's the case, though, how do we make it clear for Karen so that she doesn't make fifty items that really aren't applicable? Because she's gonna have to discern what's right and what's wrong or what's important and what's not.
That's the problem. There's a lot of good, good discussion that goes on, but it's almost impossible to capture it all succinctly in written minutes.
Now, if I sat close to Karen, I could elbow her when it, something important said.
So, here's, here's my suggestion, if I might, is, is just to sort of recap. After that discussion happens on item A, just recap what the findings are.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
That works.
And that way, she kinda gets that final go-through.
And it could be as clear as that, saying the findings from that are X, Y, and Z.
You know, so that gives her sort of that recap, and then, then you could go... Yeah, then you can conclude. You can go right into conclusion on that item right then and there if you want, or you can come back to it all.
I'd prefer to come back, this is...
And I, I think so too, 'cause then each person can conclude on their own. 'Cause if you come up with a conclusion, you're, you're concluding to the board and it really should be each board member saying, "Well, I don't agree. I think it's still gonna be dusty, even though there's paved roads."
And as you know, I'll, I'll try and find some conclusion on each one of these things just because of that reason, but...
And that helps too. Uh, and that was really my whole point is to try to get away from just a, "Do you think he met it? Yes." You, as long as we say why they think they met it, that gives any, any future reviewing authority who's gonna come in and say, "Okay, I see the rationale, how they arrived."
And, Mr. Chair, that's some of the reason why I have diarrhea of the mouth a lot. Is, is because I, I'm trying to get my thoughts out on record so that if it does go to court, then they say, "Okay, it's only forty yards of, and ten yards and fifteen yards." It's the facts that are gonna either hurt us or help us.
So, that's at the time that we're asking questions, not when we're doing findings of fact.
Correct, but I think you can bring it out either place, as long as you say, "Oh, by the way, that's another finding of fact I didn't think about." It, but as long as when we're, when we flag up an idea that it really is a finding of fact, we just make sure Karen, it, it, Karen's clear that that's what it is.
What about this? When somebody believes that something's come up, it's a finding of fact, 'cause there'll be, that's a judgment call.
Yeah.
I'd like to treat that as a finding of fact.
Sure.
And we discuss that as a finding of fact.
There's other things that, that, that's a good idea. There's, there's no one way to do this. I mean, I wanna, I wanna be clear on that. There's no, there's no, this is the way you gotta do it. I just, I'm, I just wanna make sure that the board remembers and understands that that's how your conclusion comes. It's not whether the, the applicant's a nice guy or not, uh, it's, you know, it, it has to be based on your findings. Your conclusions are based on your findings. And so, as long as you can draw conclusions of law back to the findings of fact, that's all that's important. It doesn't matter how you get there or what format you use, but, but the other point I was trying to make is that we need to try to make sure that we sort of emphasize what the findings are so Karen can capture that in the minute and then the conclusions. And in our forms, you know, our decision forms aren't broken out into findings of fact and conclusions of law. But one thing I could do if the board wants is in my staff comments, I could, I could suggest some of the basic findings of fact from the application. You then, as a board, can verify those through your questioning. I do not want to propose to, to, to find your facts for you.
Definitely.
And I would, I would say, we, we, that would, we would be on the legal balance beam at that point. I think if you did that, it'd be pushing the envelope that you could have been... So, would you prefer I not do anything like that?
I do.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Like I said, I wouldn't be writing them for you. I could only make suggestions about what the facts are based on the application.
Well, I think right now, you give us a summary letter going into each case.
That's more helpful to you.
That's helpful, and that gives us an idea of what, what you believe is right and wrong. I think that's about as far as you wanna go.
Yeah.
And then we'll form our conclusion based on the information.
It was, it was playing a factor in being true to that.
We can just take the chair when we have a finding of fact.
Oh.
I, I wanna be as helpful to you guys as I can, but I cannot, I cannot in any way interfere with your ability
And influence what?
to come to your conclusions as a board.
Right, right.
And I don't want to. I, I simply wanna he- help you with your process if I can.
And, and as far as I'm concerned, if you see a fumble, you won't offend me by saying, "Hey, you guys do that pretty well, anyway."
We, we don't care, really.
But, I mean, chat, if, if, as we do this, uh, it's gonna be a little bit of a learning process to try and design it and get comfortable, so jump in. I know you will, so...
Yeah, and I'm not really proposing to redesign, you know, our format. I think if we just, if we just concentrate on making sure we give Karen clear clues as to what we're, what we, you, the board, feel are the findings and how you're concluding, how you're coming to conclusions based on that. That's all she really needs, is just clear direction as to what are the salient points here, because the quest, lines of questioning kinda sometimes go all over the place. Really don't ever get back to any kind of finding of fact they might have, you know?
And the re- the reason I think we oughta do it, Mark, when, uh, I mean, Mr. Chair, when we are not having the open discussion and when we're going through those items, 'cause then she can say, "All right, item one, these are the findings of facts for that. Hold off on the conclusion. We'll come back to it." And then item two, these are the, you know, what do you think? You ask me, I'll give you my findings of fact. These guys will give you their findings of fact. And it's real clean to present it that way.
The only negative of that is that's going to be, 'cause you're gonna go down that line.
Yeah.
We're gonna turn around and go with the conclusions, and they're gonna say right back to the yes, 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 yes.
Well, no, that, that's where I would encourage the board to, to not, you can say yes. That's, that's, that's fine, or you can say no, but why?
I'd say based on the finding of fact, we've proven that the applicant has met the question one.
And, and just maybe at that point, just state a couple of those findings.
Certainly, certainly.
You know, what, what was the, what was the kicker for you to say yes? Well, it was because this. That's all you really need to do. You don't need to, you don't need to list the whole litany of facts.
Right.
Just the one that, for that particular thing that made you say yes.
Right.
That's all you need.
That makes sense.
So, I make a fi- I make a finding of fact. He agrees with me. He says, "I agree with Mark." Is that sufficient or not sufficient?
Based upon...
Well, yeah, I mean, if he's agreeing with your finding of fact.
That's okay.
That's okay.
He can stop with that.
Everybody doesn't need to say that same thing.
That, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, that would be-
So, so, because you often do that.
But, but that's, but that's, yeah, and that's okay, I mean, it's, I'm not trying to stretch the meeting out to, to another two hours, just so everybody can say the same thing, but as long as you're agreeing to what that statement of fact was.
Whoever said, whoever started it.
That's, that's all we're trying to do here.
So, can I, so, like, if, if Mr. Richards states a finding of fact, and Stark and Crockett and they all agree with him, I don't need to write that, that they all, I can write that they agreed with Mr. Richards' finding of fact.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as the finding of fact gets written somewhere in there, and everyone agrees about that.
But like, if he re, if he repeats, Mr. Stark repeats the same thing as Mr. Richards'.
Because at that point, they're not voting, it's just the finding of fact.
Finding of fact, okay.
Then, then the, the other key issue is to make sure that we sort of get a all-yay, all-nay kind of vote on each one of those items, which sometimes will say, yeah, I agree, or I agree, or I agree, and it may not be clear to Karen, okay, was that a unanimous vote?
Right, right.
So, maybe just a thumbs up and thumbs down, and then why?
Or sometimes you might skip a voting member.
[laughing]
Just throwing that out there, Mr. Chair.
Well, like, I think at the end, when we went back through A, and I'm using Mr. Richards because he started, he kept, the chair always went down to Mr. Richards, he started it, but like, when it got up here a little ways, people were just at the yeah point, because they agreed, so.
Yeah, and that's fine, too.
And that's okay, okay.
As long as they're agreeing to the same, for the same reason, if they have other reasons,